All right. Good evening. This is Tuesday, May ninth. Ninth, yes, my goodness. Twenty twenty-three meeting of the Town of Berlin Planning Board. As a matter of fact, please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some of the attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you. That ugly band T-shirt you decided to wear tonight or anything else you intend to or not screen share on your computer. Anything that you broadcast will be captured and recorded forever and ever and will possibly wind up as a TikTok video. To be shared amongst your friends and neighbors. This is Tom Sanford, Chair of the Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members of the Planning Board are present and can hear me prior to me calling the meeting to order. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Jay Teach.
I hear.
Karen McDonald.
Here.
Thomas Andrew.
Here.
And with a quorum of the board present, I call this meeting to order at seven thirty-six P M. Tuesday, May ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. This is an open meeting of the Planning Board being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, two thousand and twenty. Due to the current state of emergency in Commonwealth Massachusetts due to the outbreak of the COVID nineteen virus. Specific information and general guidelines for the remote participation by members of the public can be found on the Town of Berlin website. The governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location and allows and encourages us to participate remotely. For this meeting, the planning board is convenient using the Zoom platform as posted on the agenda, which includes links for the public to join this meeting. I'll introduce each speaker on the agenda. After their concluding remarks, I will invite each board member by name to provide any comments, questions, penetrating insights, and or motions. Please hold all your insights till your name is called. Please remember to mute your tell your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Speak clearly to ensure accurate minutes are recorded. For any reason or for any response, please wait till you yield yielded before and state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in conversation with one another, please do so through me to avoid multiple conversations happening at the same time. Lastly, please note that each vote in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Thank you all for your understanding and cooperation. Do we have a motion to accept the minutes of the last meeting?
Uh, I just have a couple of, so Jay got my name right every time except for once.
Really? This is in the May first?
Hold on, let me. Uh, and then there was so. In the April eleventh minutes. Just wanted to make sure. So in part number six, where you're talking about the River Road property. Oh, I guess I read that wrong. Um, so you wrote the lots across the street from the Rockwell apartment complex was zoned as A R on the street and L B in the back. I guess that is accurate enough.
Yeah, because it's a public development in the front and there's boundless adventures in the back.
Yeah, no, it was more across the street from the Rockwell Apartments, which I guess technically is true. Really across on River Road. Yeah. More adjacent to the property that was being discussed.
Across the across River Road West from. See the spelling error? You guys didn't even notice it. I always put at least one in.
Yeah, my name.
On this one, your name's wrong?
Oh, no, I'm trying to find the one where my name's wrong. I don't see it.
Down from what you were just looking at. It says Karen Karen believes this is I because.
I have to confess, I didn't read the April eleventh because I'm going to abstain from that. I was down in South Carolina that week.
Let's just see if that's what it says. Absent Thomas Andrew, you got it.
So, no, it's actually these minutes. Section two, paragraph two. Yes.
Oh, my goodness, you know, my daughter.
So with those amendments, I will second the motion.
Okay.
No Mr. Wheeler tonight, huh?
Maybe he's on the run. Zoom also.
Are you still recovering from his travels?
Looked very relaxed and feeling good at the election.
He did.
I I would note, um, I said to Joni, I talked to her about half an hour ago, she's down on the vineyard opening up the house and said, I said that, um, no one ran against me for Planning Board and unsurprisingly, I was elected.
Any any idea how many people voted?
I think it was very low, I think two sixty, thereabouts. I have to say. I forgot to go down myself because I was I was in the, uh, we we had, um, comments on proposed regulations that the S E C had put out that were do close of business on Monday and we thought we had it buttoned up on Friday, but as these things go, people raised issues at the last minute and, um, it's a, it's the American Bankers Association, so it's this huge committee. I got involved in that and, uh, I realized about eight o'clock, I never, never went down.
Well, you wouldn't have gotten in, it was packed. Got in the door. They were having some kind of nice dinner, though. It smells great. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to accept the minutes of the meeting.
We're doing.
Yeah.
Yep.
amended minutes of the meeting.
Hold on, Eloise has her hand up.
Two eighty-six voters.
Oh, okay.
Two eighty-six. Thank you.
Yeah, I I looked at it late last night when it came in. Yeah. All right.
Okay, we have an, uh, motion and an amendment and a second. Um, is there any further discussion?
Are these for the three sets of minutes?
We'll take them one at a time.
Okay.
No, we, yeah, we could do them all at once and I'll just say I'll abstain as to April eleventh and I think that'll be fine.
Okay, if you, if that's the preference, is there any discussion of the other minutes? The one in May second and that one. April, April twenty-fifth. Nope, seeing none, I will ask you to vote. For the three and Thomas is going to clarify the ones that he's not going to vote for. Jay Teach.
Wait a minute, was it May second or May first the?
The town meeting.
Oh, all right, all right. Then I say I.
Karen McDonald.
I.
Thomas Andrew.
I as to all accept the April eleventh, as to which I abstain because I was absent.
Excellent, and Tom Sanford, I, motion carries unanimously. Excellent, thank you. Now, we have a couple of bills.
Couple of bills.
Couple of bills. I don't know whether you saw them or not. This is for the Housing Consortium. Consortium. This was sent to me by, uh, Tim. So Berlin's assessment for F Y twenty-three quarter three is a thousand twelve one thousand twelve dollars and fifty cents.
Can I make them? Yeah, I make a motion that we pay the how's, is it Neshoba Valley?
It says how Hudson, uh, no, it says, uh, Town of Hudson Department of Community Development, Housing Consortium invoice fiscal year twenty-three dash. That's this quarter two. Says quarter two up top, says quarter three in the details below. Invoice due date five to two thousand and twenty-three, payment due six to two thousand and twenty-three. Berlin's assessments, a thousand twelve dollars and fifty cents.
I make a motion that we pay that bill.
Excellent.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to pay Town of Berlin's portion of the Housing Consortium bill. Looks like, uh, huh, we're, other than Bolton, we're the highest, second, we're the second highest.
We used a lot more hours than anybody else.
We did, actually. We did a lot. Yep, yep. So I got a motion in a second to pay the bill. Can I, uh, uh, Jay Teach?
I.
Karen McDonald.
I.
Thomas Andrew.
I.
And Tom Sanford, I, motion carries unanimously to pay it. So I'll make up a warrant and we'll get some signatures on that. I have another bill. This was sent to me from, uh, Kristen Rubin. My town administrator for Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. This is an invoice for the Berlin two thousand and twenty-two housing, housing production plan fifty percent completion. The amount is five thousand three hundred and fifty dollars.
I make a motion to pay Central Mass Regional Planning five thousand fifty?
Yeah, five thousand three hundred and fifty dollars.
Five thousand three hundred and fifty dollars.
Yep, and it's for a, uh, housing production plan at fifty percent completion.
Second.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask you to vote. Jay Teach.
Hi.
Karen McDonald.
Hi.
Thomas Andrew.
I.
And Tom Sanford, I, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. That's all I have of bills. Jay, did you have anything, any bills?
No, just the one you already.
Okay. Is there any additional mail that we should be taking up at this time or should we?
Not as of a couple of days ago.
Okay.
Have my key when I went there last night.
Oh.
I could have picked the lock, but I didn't want people to know I can do that.
Yeah.
Do you watch the lock picking lawyer? Oh, my gosh, she's on YouTube. That man can pick any lock. Like, don't even bother buying a lock. So pickable, it's unbelievable.
Nice.
Okay, so we want to take up the next thing on the agenda is the fee schedule, fee structure.
Hmm, I was gonna do a bunch of work to prepare for that and I started it, but I didn't finish it.
Okay.
Ran out of time.
Okay. So. Take it up next time?
I think that'd be a good idea.
Okay. We'll wait on that.
I got another topic we could think about if we want something else to do.
We can until eight o'clock.
You have to, I have to share my screen.
You can do that.
Keep forgetting how to do that. That's under more share screen. I want you guys to see my new screensaver on my computer. How do you like it, Carolyn?
Uh, if it stays that color, I love it.
I was looking today in the center of town. Let's see if I can share my picture. I probably can't here. Oh, yeah, that.
Horrible, where is that?
That's in the center of town, underneath a tree in front of the church. It says follow the canon Clara Barton Civil War Letters, May twenty-first in the eighteen seventy.
I thought that was like a giant billboard, so it's probably not that big.
No.
And it's temporary. When is the event?
May twenty-first.
So it'll be up for two weeks.
It's pretty hard to see it. Nobody's gonna notice it.
You did.
I was getting lunch at the store.
I actually noticed it too.
You did?
Yeah.
Well, this one probably wouldn't go on our municipal sign because it's color and we're gonna ban color, right?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I I think, I think we need a cubic jumbo Jumbotron in the center of town and in its, um, unused state, it could show a picture of what was behind it, so it would be invisible.
That's a great.
There you go. Tom, think of the electricity you'd save lighting your house if Jay got to put it where he wants to put it.
Yeah.
Sunglasses to go to bed, though.
Yeah.
Oh, and you could pick your color like you can in your car now. Pick what color you all your lights are.
Okay. Yeah, I think if you would, if you would turn it to a dull red at about, uh, eleven o'clock when I go to bed, that would be great.
We could put a sunset on it for you, slowly moving. So we're not actually moving either.
I actually already have a sunset for my house, but, um, you know, maybe one can't have too many.
Right, that's what I had to present.
It's lovely.
Center later, we gotta make some decisions about signs. What do we got? We got stuff in our parking lot.
Yeah, we do.
With signs, the fees, and there was something else, oh, uh.
Parking, parking.
Well, it's gonna be tonight.
Right.
Right.
Parking was in the parking lot then.
Ah, and then the, uh, electric car chargers.
Yeah.
Is my screen still shared? Because I'd stuck.
It is.
Yes, it is.
I think I can. Um, I can do it for you.
All right.
I, you're all set, Jay.
All right.
Yeah.
It's just got bigger. When do you want to talk about signs? Put on the agenda sometime?
Two thousand thirty.
Yeah.
We should put it on the agenda. What about July?
We just meet once in July, right?
Once in July, once in August.
What, is it the second or the fourth? The second? Tuesday?
Or the third.
Yeah, usually we make it either the third or the second.
Oh, that's okay.
Right, so the sec- the second is the eleventh and that's what I have
for our meeting.
Planning Board on, yeah.
Okay, then we're meeting seven eleven.
Okay, um,
You're not gonna be around.
I will, I will not be there. We have, um, Hannah's fiance's family with us on the vineyard that week, so.
Are you, uh, in favor or opposed to an L E D sign?
Um, is this a scheduling question, Jay?
Yeah.
Because if you're in favor, he wants to make sure you're there. And if you're against, he wants to, he doesn't care.
Well, let me, um, let me make an observation about annual town meeting and one of the motions and say that I'm on the fence as the town meeting was on the fence for way too long, um. I'm, I'm, I'm open-minded about it and I, I do think, um, yeah, I, I do think that there are a lot of uses, uh, you know, I'm a deacon, I'm involved in the church and so on and, um, you know, I do, I do think there are needs to have signs that, uh, that people will notice instead of just sitting there and using up real estate, um. But I'm also, um, concerned that when we do that, we understand the impacts to abutters and so on of those signs. So I think, you know, I, I think I'd be a good person to participate in it, um.
Oh, that's right, it's right by your house, that's right. All right, we'll, we'll make sure you're around for it.
Um, June. June, June would be fine, um. August I'd have to look at again because Wednesday, uh, the third Wednesday in August is, uh, grand illumination for, um, the Methodist campground where we have the cottage. And so that's like an absolutely impossible night to try to do, uh, any kind of meeting.
Right.
So June is fine.
The August meeting is scheduled the, on the eighth, which is the second Tuesday, just so you know.
Okay, the eighth I could do, the eighth I could do. The next week I, I.
So we got the twenty-third coming up and then we've got uh, two in June, but I'm gonna be away for one of them.
So which one are you gonna be here for?
Uh, we could start on the twenty-third of May.
Twenty-third of May?
May.
Yeah, twenty-third of May is.
Okay, and then June, so June I just have one meeting also, is that correct?
You do.
Well, we schedule one and if we need to, we do two.
Okay, June thirteenth.
That's when I'm in Denmark, so that's yeah, one in the morning, yeah.
All right, so let's, let's start on the twenty-third of May and see how we go with it.
All right. Write that in. We're going to have multiple public hearings and all sorts of things.
Oh, yeah. And I think, you know, we should think about doing those in person. Yep. Okay.
Can we have outdoor meetings? Is that allowed? That's true.
Well, right, we had, so, hmm, but those weren't like board meetings. Those were information concessions for the bylaw.
Oh, that's right, remember that.
Yeah.
Well, I think, um, yeah, we can, we can figure that out. Anything else on that? Because we're approaching the eight o'clock witching hour, aren't we?
Yes, we are.
Well, everyone should start thinking about what our bounds would be on modernizing our sign by law.
I have put that down in my to-do list. Before the next meeting.
Examples, to collect some pictures of signs you do and do not like, we could look at them.
Yeah, I'm not sure I have time to do that, but I, you know, I think we can have a substantive discussion about it.
I'll even take a little video.
All right, well, you need the kind that you like, right?
No, the kind you like.
Okay, we're up on, uh, against eight o'clock, so we will, um, change and start our discussion of a parking bylaw.
Hmm, a parking bylaw or?
Yeah, it's a question.
Down as.
Well, it said, it just said parking. The question was.
Okay, sorry, I missed.
Are we talking about changes to our bylaw or are we talking about uh, asking the Z B A to approve a site plan for this specific one that has a variance in it? Or one or more variances in it? I wasn't quite sure what we were doing.
What time is Bigelow Road on the agenda for? I don't. Eight, because Wayne and Kathy are both here.
Okay.
Would you like me to promote them?
Yes, please.
Hi, folks.
Hello, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Good, so again, Wayne Bellic Land Design Collaborative, uh, joining me is Kathy Adams from Kane Industrial Trust. Um, so before we begin, we want to thank you guys for spending so much time with us uh, on this. Um, as you folks know, um, you know, we understand where the town is coming from. Uh, and I think you have an understanding of where we're coming from. I think we can meet in the middle. I think we've got something that, uh, that does that. Um, you know, as part of this, you know, we are looking at, uh, competing interests here between um, again, one of the things that we wanted to do is preserve as much of the, uh, natural site as possible and to keep everything, uh, to one side of the wetland. So with that said, I think when we last left off, we were talking about at the previous meeting, what we had looked at, uh, which was, you know, looking at different sites around the area and, and, uh, taking the position that we, we felt that um, we didn't need, uh, as much parking, uh, as a result of some changes in the way things are being done post-COVID. Um, and, you know, we did hear the board's concern. So with that, uh, we've come up with something, um, that we'd like to share with you folks, um, and then I get your feedback ideally, uh, at the, in the end, what we'd like is to be able to go to the Z B A, we have a hearing with them tomorrow night. Um, it would like to be able to go before them and, uh, present a plan with feedback uh, from this board, uh, as to where, where, uh, where we think we're headed and where we'd like to go. So with that, um, uh, will you guys allow me to, uh, to share my screen with you?
Yes, please.
You folks see that?
Yes.
Thank you. So what this shows is, uh, so as, as you folks know, um, along with our, uh, R and D site plan application that we have before the Z B A, we also have, uh, a variance petition seeking the three variances. Um, this layout here, um, we kind of feel strongly toward this building configuration, which kind of drives the bus on, on the parking. Uh, and we feel strongly toward this because in working with the commission, um, we've, we've, and thank you, Carolyn, uh, to you and your commission, uh, for all the time they've spent with us uh, in, in looking to try to be as sensitive as, as possible. One of the, the comments that they had made initially, uh, to the Z B A way back when is that they appreciated the fact that we had the parking and we agreed to pull the parking as far away from the resource areas as possible. And that was what we had in the, uh, the initial filing, which was the cannabis, uh, design. We did carry it through in, in the R and D as, as well. So as you folks, uh, recall, uh, one of the, the requirements was, uh, or what we discussed was let's see what happens if we can bring this thing, uh, into compliance, uh, with the, uh, the local, uh, regulations. So originally, when we filed in the application before the Z B A right now, uh, and the one approved by Concom was for a ninety-two and a half thousand square foot building. Concom was for a ninety-two and a half thousand square foot building. So what we heard was, you know, can you, can you come up with something, you know, try to bring it into compliance with, uh, the parking requirements? And take a look at that square footage of the building and see what you can do. So what we've done is we've come up with a square footage of the building. Which, uh, if you look, uh, on the screen, I have it at seventy-four thousand square feet. So we were able to, to knock off almost twenty thousand square feet of the building. What that, that did was it opened up a little bit more room. For us, uh, around the building for additional parking, uh, while at the same time. Not requiring as, as many parking spaces. I think when we were at the ninety-two five, I think we required over four hundred parking spaces. Something tells me it was in the order of like four seventy or something crazy, uh, at the seventy-four thousand. The required, uh, parking spaces here are, uh, two hundred and ninety-six. We provided three hundred and two. So. If I could just show you what we have for the layout. So again, coming in, into the site up through here, the original design. Again, shows this building. And it was deeper in this direction here by about another twenty feet. And what, so the orientation is, is like I said, pretty much the same, the parking in this area here. Uh, in the original filing was limited to this area in here, we've added this here. And then over in here, uh, we've added, uh, this, uh, in here. Uh, along with this in here and up into this area in here to comply with the, uh, the zoning. And that was one space, uh, per two hundred and fifty, uh, square feet for a total of, like I said, the two hundred and ninety-eight. So let's just call it three hundred spaces. So with that, it's a bit more, uh, intrusive, uh, as we can see from the grading. This is the grading plan for the seventy-four thousand square foot building. Again, uh, this would still require two variances, uh, for parking between the building and the front. Uh, of the layout of the road, uh, and within the setback, which is this area in here. Um, as we spoke to the building commissioner, um, you know, initially. It was determined that that area of the bylaw was a little gray. As to whether or not it would require a variance in, you know, for that, uh, but we said, you know, to, to, and he agreed. To be conservative here, let's apply for the variance for that. So in this particular case, the only variance that we, the, which was the third variance that we were, uh, seeking relief for. Uh, was, uh, the number of parking spaces. Originally, we had a hundred and thirty-two spaces and now we're at, at, at the three hundred. Which again complies with zoning. So our thought. Um, and we'd like to run this by you folks. I think we talked a little bit about green parking. Uh, with you, or that may have been Kathy. Uh, I was, I think Kathy, the last ZBA meeting, did you fly solo to that or how did we do that?
Yeah, I did. I, I didn't do anything but do the continuance.
Okay, so I know we had, uh, discussed green parking, we'd like to do that here. Um, and the thought would be that if we had of the three hundred, uh, spaces. Over in this area here. So let me zoom in, actually, let me go to the side of the sheet. In this area here. That total number of spaces comes out to about a hundred and eight spaces. So if we took the three oh two. Total minus a hundred and eight, that leaves us with a hundred and ninety-four spaces. That if they built all of this out. Uh, and kept everything. On this side, everything, so with north going up to about two o'clock in that direction, if we kept everything. To, uh, to this side and here. As our parking and not cross the wetland at this time, uh, but yet go ahead and lay it out. Uh, for, uh, reserve spaces. That, and that would be green space, uh, that would just remain undisturbed. We would end the parking. So basically what would happen is we could take this, uh, here and the pavement here. Until such time, it would be determined that they need to, uh, require additional, if they need, have the need for additional space, uh, spaces. They would continue, uh, with the parking up in, in this area, but for the time being, what we'd like to do. Is leave that as reserve spaces and build out, uh, the rest of the site. If they did have to go back, if they did require additional spaces, they would go back before, uh, the town. To seek an amendment to the, or modification to the site plan. Um, and go through the process. So again, like I said, I think this gets us to where. The, where it would comply in terms of the number of spaces. But again, our thought is, you know, that we don't need that many spaces. So we'd like to get your thoughts on taking the approach that, uh, initially, uh, we get the whole site. Approved with this being approved as green spaces. So we would show this on the layout materials plan, not necessarily get into the. The full blown drainage, uh, on this, but show this as the layout materials plan. As green spaces, do the full design for this area here, grading drainage utilities, lighting, uh, the whole thing. And when we go for that modification, then we would get into the nuts and bolts of the design on this. But at least show that physically we can fit it over this side. To, to meet the full requirement. As we talked about it, um, you know, in some of the photos that we had at one of the previous meetings with you folks. Um, we noticed that. You know, the, the sites that are not being used right now, basically. Uh, you're looking at these parking lots and it resembles some of the, the pavement that you'd see in. Um, the movie like the Omega Man with Charlton Heston or Day After Tomorrow. Where you had grass literally growing up out of the pavement because it wasn't used and maintained. We don't want that up here and we feel that if there isn't really a need for this area in here and we go ahead and build it. We may end up with that down the road and that's not what we want. So again, Mr. Chairman, what we'd like to do is, you know. Build this side, leave this as green and get your, get your thoughts on that.
Well, I personally appreciate the effort you guys have put into this. You did hear us, we did make that. Proposal to you guys and I appreciate the fact that you came back with something that's very clever. And you reduce the overall size of the, of the building footprint, which I appreciate too. It can't be.
Thank you.
Decisions to make, I, I understand. That being said, I, I, I like it and. I don't have any. Initial, I don't like this or anything along those lines. The, uh, you, I mean, you're going to have to do some. Engineering or whatever, when you, when you do this, I know you're not going to go for the full blown, but you're going to have to have some. Demonstration that it's going to work and, you know, where the layout is and where the, um, elevations are and things along those lines.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely, absolutely. And so in this particular situation, uh, as you can see, so. One of the challenges, um, and I'm going to go into this sheet here. So one of the challenges that you face with a, uh, a site that has, uh, varying topography. Uh, is, you know, in meeting the state stormwater regulations. You, if you're in a cut situation, uh, for a parking lot, you can't propose stormwater. Because you're probably going to be too close to the groundwater. So the only areas that we can propose stormwater is in areas of fill. So when you look at this area in here, uh, we will be looking at stormwater here, here. And in this area here where we have a, uh, a fill situation. So, uh, and up in here obviously would be in, into a cut situation. So it, it, in our minds, we, we know we can make it work. Um, it's just that, you know, the, the effort of, of actually going through it and the dollars associated with it at this time. For that additional design, it's not quite twice the design, but it's pretty darn close to it in terms of stormwater. So the thought would be that we cross that bridge, uh, when we come to it.
Wayne, uh, Tom, if I may ask a question. Wayne, if on this wing of the parking lot. Instead of cutting, why, why, and I'm really just. Kind of half formulating this as I'm saying it, why wouldn't you go uphill? And place the parking lot. Higher. I guess, because then you'd be filling, you can't, you can't see where I'm pointing, but.
So if you want to tell me.
Right, so.
Feel free to tell me where to go.
Right, so.
Sure you'd like to.
Careful, careful. Uh, come down a little bit lower with your cursor, a little lower, so right there. You would have to fill that in order to not have to cut the back part, is that true?
So even with the fill in this area, we still need to cut the back part. One of the challenges that we have with parking, so if you look at this grade in here. You'll note that we show a five percent call out in here.
Okay.
So what, what we have found is in, uh. Parking lots, I know we've all been there. I know that we've had the door closed. So that it drives your shin right into the, the car where you climb into the door, which is quite pleasant. And that's it, you know, in a situation where the grades are too steep. What we have found is. A six percent grade in, in parking lots. Kind of promotes that type of swing action on a door. Obviously, you don't want to hit other cars. What we find is the maximum grade we like to go is about five percent. And so that's what's kind of driving that. So we start with the grade in here. We've got the grading in this parking area, we're coming down to a low point. And then coming, uh, back up, we're coming down to a low point to minimize the impacts within the, the buffer zone.
Right.
So we come down to the low point, we come back up. Um, and that's where we're, we're, we have the challenge with, uh, the cuts. That's not to say we couldn't look at this, this back area. I believe we're currently proposing that with a. Three to one slope. That's not to say that we couldn't do something in there where we could increase that, uh, to perhaps a two, two to one. Or a one and a half to one with some juke matting, uh, and plant vegetation to stabilize it. And that would pull the, the grading back. So if it's a, you know, a three to one or we bring it down a one and a half to one, you know. In theory, I'm, I'm thinking that would be able to pull the grading back in a year. To about that two ninety contour, maybe two ninety-four.
And then if you did that, you could even actually pull. The other end of the parking lot away from the wetlands a little more.
We could, but what happens is now we're getting closer to this. I would rather have it toward this end. Uh, rather than pulling it up to here because, uh, what we're looking at, uh, on the upper gradient side. I've been in a situation where we've had a, a, a cut with a wetland and what I propose is an impermeable liner. Whenever we, uh, have that situation is not to drain, literally drain the wetlands up above.
Right. But the lower one, if I remember walking the site, the lower one is the one that. Is more stream like.
Yeah.
And wetter, the upper one is more isolated.
Yep, and so again, kind of looking at, so now things, things are starting to come back to me, so. Thanks for smacking me around here, Carolyn. It's the, you, you loosen the marbles here, so I'm remembering a few things. So and looking at this design, when I looked at this, um. You know Chris in our office, wonderful, very talented. I looked at this and I was talking to Kathy after we, we issued this. This may be subject to change, I may be looking at, rather than doing this work in here, because I did see this up in here. I may just continue this up through here. The parking. So just run the bank right up.
From a wetlands perspective, I think that would be better.
And that's, and that's kind of where I was thinking. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because you're just, you're just hugging the contours of the wetlands.
Yep.
With all of it.
Yeah, so that's what, that's again, and thanks for jogging my memory because I remembered, uh, looking at that, um, or thinking that. After I saw this, so that would be the plan, is looking at something different. I think as we, uh, we get into this, so this would, uh, require, uh. Going back to the commission as well, uh, with this, this new design. And that's where Carolyn, uh, we will see what, what we've come up with, we'll be able to further refine it by then.
Yep. Yeah, because in order for ZBA to be comfortable with this. It has to pass muster at conservation.
It does, and with that in mind, Mr. Chairman, I think that, so we were going to be before the ZBA tomorrow night. And, um, the chair likes to have some written documentation. I know it's, uh, in the bylaw as well. I can't recall if it, I don't think it requires something from the planning board. But I think, uh, you know, if we, if the general consensus of the board is that. The board likes what we see, what you're seeing tonight. Um, if it wouldn't be too much of an ask, you know, perhaps, uh, an email, uh, from the planning board. Uh, to the ZBA, uh, just kind of recapping tonight and offering your thoughts would be great. It would be much appreciated. And again, this is all subject to, you know, where you guys, uh, how the rest of the board feels about what we're discussing.
I'm sure we can do that, write an email, but I want to hear what the other members have to say.
Agreed, thank you. Thank you, Carolyn.
What do you think, Jay?
So the built out parking ends up being two point seven spaces per thousand square feet now, is that right?
Math, oh boy. Two point seven thousand.
About two hundred spaces and it's now seventy.
Yeah, so. So Mr. Chairman, Jay had done this before and, you know, at eight twenty, my brain doesn't work as well as it does at eight twenty AM. Uh, so yeah, so two point seven per, so two fifty. Two point seven? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because I've been trying to get some data points from other. Places, the problem is my, most of my data comes from closer in the city where there may be some public transportation, which changed parking requirements dramatically.
And I, and, and through the chair, I thought there was a comment that I had seen to that effect. And Jay may have. Okay, because I thought that was a good point, that's a good point.
There's a lot of discussion now about. Relieving parking requirements to try to build affordable housing. But. It's with the assumption that the affordable housing is getting built in a place where there's public transportation.
Try that, that's right. And with the new, you know, uh. MBTA bylaw that's, you know, thrown out there for towns to adopt. And create a bylaw, which is, I think is a great thing. Lot of communities are looking to adopt it and working on it pretty much as we speak.
Yep. And you guys listen to Fresh Air, the Fresh Air podcast?
I don't listen to the Fresh Air podcast.
Yeah.
Did they do a thing on it?
Today. Someone wrote a book about parking.
Yes, pave, the paving of paradise.
That's it.
Yes.
Said it, yeah.
Yes.
I'll have to look it up.
I actually ordered it after watching it, Jay, because I know we're going to be talking about the, uh. Parking bylaw, not at this meeting, but, uh. Sometime between now and the fall, if there's a special town meeting and, uh. Yeah, there were a lot of interesting observations.
Jay, in particular to this proposal. Do you have any other, um, insight or comments?
Um, I think just trying to extrapolate from what, um, the norms are. In the city versus out here, two point seven seems like an acceptable number.
Thank you.
And they also have the, a, a plan in place, so if it's, doesn't work and everybody's parking in front of Ant Whistle. And walking up the hill, they can figure it out and.
Right.
Yeah.
Talking to a broker who sells, uh, commercial buildings. And. That's part of what I learned from him, but the other thing is the idea that, um. These buildings that are continue, are going to continue to be empty like they were during COVID, nobody's buying that anymore.
No.
He says.
But they're not going to be completely full either, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, not that it's our problem, it's more your problem that when you try to sell a building and you don't have adequate parking, it makes it very difficult.
Yep.
I guess I'd have just a couple of things to say about it. One. And we talked about it the last time, I think we even suggested to you to take the sort of approach that, um. The health regulations. The, uh, health regulations take with respect to reserve septic tanks and, um. To build what you need to build. To disturb what you need to disturb and to prove that. If the situation evolves in the future, you have the ability. To accommodate for that. And, um. I actually think that as we look at the changes to the bylaw, we ought to. We ought to really think about, uh, incorporating a reserve requirement. As part of that, uh, as part of that bylaw. The other thing that, um. I would say is that. I think. The parking ratios to square feet. Is highly liquid environment at this point. And with hybrid. Work arrangements, um. I, I. I'm absolutely certain that the ratios that we're currently operating with. Are excessive. So. You know, I, I would say that, uh, that this is a progressive approach. Um, if they show. That. The. That they have an alternate. Bonafide reserve area. Um, that this is a, this is a good approach. And I think that it, um. It. Limits the impact on. The land. And I think that, uh, it's, it's probably. Well positioned. To respond to the developing patterns of hybrid. Work environments.
Mm hmm. Well, I, I'm just not a believer that. If hybrid, you know, if fewer people end up going to the office, that the company is going to continue to maintain. Leasing or owning is, you know, a bunch of space they're not using.
Yes, well, that's a problem for the applicants and not us, by.
No, but it means, it means that the density will be high because no one's going to. Pay for real estate they're not using. Right? So in downtown Boston with fewer people going to work is people are bailing out of leases left and right.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I, I work at post office square and you're right. But, um. You know, we, we have a hybrid environment in which people are expected to be in the office three days a week and working remote. Two days a week. That for our firm, um, works, at least in the, in the current environment. And results in, uh. You know, obviously a reduction of people who are driving into Boston, parking, um. In the adjacent parking garages. So, you know, I, I, I think it's a, it's a, it's a rational approach.
You're not making you share your office, eh, Thomas?
Uh, no, no. No, they, they did away with the offices back in two thousand thirteen when they moved the, the, the buildings and I started working, uh, two days remote anyway. But, um. Yeah, I, I, you know, I, I, I think it's a. I think it's a rational approach. I, I, I hate the idea of, um. Disturbing the land and paving it over and so on for things that will. Never be used and probably never maintained. Um. We'll go back to grass and so on, and let's spare everybody the expense is my sense. And if, if. They need it, it's there.
Thank you.
So since my. Earlier comments were all concerning the wetlands. Adjacent, I would like to thank you guys for. He, for hearing us and reducing the size of the building. Um. And, you know, as much as I would like to see the site remain natural.
Mm hmm.
Um, I think this is especially if we can pull off the reserve parking. Get everybody to sign off on that. I think that is the better way. To handle this because I, I agree. I've, since it's become an issue. I look at parking lots everywhere I go. And they're half full. Everywhere I go. Um, shopping, business, you know, everywhere. Um. So I think forcing. A larger amount of parking. In an unknown. You know, with, with not really having a clear grasp on what the future is going to look like. Or office buildings, um. I think this is a better solution, certainly for the site.
Thank you. Just out of curiosity, Mr. Chairman, um. What was it that caused you folks to look at revising your, your parking bylaw? Was it just that time that, you know, it just came up and. You know, looking at a few sites that, you know, maybe we need to look at things a little differently. Was there something that? And it's just out of curiosity more than anything else.
It's been ongoing discussions and how people are, are, you know. Uh, constructing things and, and do we really need all of this paved surfaces? And, um, I mean, the board has always been one of let's reduce as, as much as we can. We have it there. It's in our bylaw. We can force you to do it. But we prefer to work with the proponents. And to come up with something that's, uh, creative. We do it with, you know, common driveways. We do it with, um, small subdivisions. Um, you know, we're, 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 we don't want to wind up paving the entire town. That's not our goal.
Terrific. Good approach, good approach.
So, uh, is there any, anybody have anything further that, uh, they want to add?
Um, I, I think just that, uh, are we going to provide an email to, uh?
Yeah, I was going, yes, Thomas, that's what I was going to ask next. If no one has any further comments, I would ask for a motion that we. Write a, a, a supporting email to the ZBA. And I'll vote on it. And then we can record to them what our vote was.
Yep. And, um, I've taken some notes as we've been talking and, uh. Tom, I, I think, uh, we could authorize the chairman to send the email, but I can, when we finish this call, quickly jump on the computer. And send you some of those bullet points and you can work with them or not.
Okay, I appreciate that. So would somebody care to make a motion? Why don't we word it that will support this current. Plan with a slight modification that the, the parking. The upper lobe of the parking on the right hand side will. Uh, rotate, uh, easterly at ninety degrees.
Mm hmm.
So moved.
Uh, when, may I add something to that? Um. And that we authorize the chairman. To issue to the ZBA. An email supporting this indicating that technical change. And the reasons, uh, that we have discussed at this meeting for suggesting it.
Okay.
I amend my so moved to include Tom, Thomas's. Uh, addition.
Okay. So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Do the amended proposal or amended motion? Seeing none, I'll ask you to vote. This is to write a support email to the zoning board of appeals. Uh, stating that the reasons, um, that Thomas is going to give me plus the bullet points that I wrote down. With the, uh. Upper lobe of the parking lot being rotated. Uh, that we support this. And I will ask you to vote. Jay Teach.
Aye.
Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
And I, Thomas Sanford. Motion carries unanimously. I'll write that tomorrow.
We have a hand up in the audience.
Okay, I'm sorry. I should have asked for our audience if there was any. Audience, uh. Participation. Let's see what the audience has to say.
Eloise.
It's just me.
Well, I'm sorry, Eloise. I didn't mean to not recognize you.
Okay, I was just going to ask for a copy so that I can put it in my records also.
Not a problem. I'll give you a copy of, uh, the email I sent to, um, the ZBA.
Thank you.
And also Wayne, can you, uh, send me a PDF drawing?
Can do.
With the changes that, that we were just discussing.
Sure. Sure. Thank you.
Uh, the only other audience member is Lynn Ryan.
Okay.
Lynn, do you have any comments?
She never had a.
No handwriting, no.
Okay. Then our motion and our vote stands.
Thank you, folks. Much appreciated, uh, as always. We really enjoy working in the town of Berlin. So. Uh, onward to tomorrow night with the ZBA.
Hold on, Lynn has raised her hand.
Oh, okay. Can we, uh, hear from Lynn, please?
Yeah.
Hi, folks.
Hi Lynn, how are you?
Good. Who would enforce the, um, or determine whether or not. There needed to be additional parking?
Yeah. May I respond to that, Mr. Chairman? Because I was thinking of that, um. And my feeling is that, um, we can leave that to the commercial arrangement between. The lessors and the property owners. If they have to park, you know, in the, in the breakdown lane on four ninety five and walk in. Um, you know, there's going to be pressure for that.
Hmm.
I did think about it, but I did think that that, that could be left to, um. The commercial arrangements.
Market forces.
Yeah. Lynn, what do you think about that? Maybe I'm being too facile about it.
I'm just not sure that it would be the responsibility of the municipality.
I think we could, we, I, I, you know. I think you could, you could make it clear that, uh. The determination of the activation of that because you'd have approved of the reserve area would be up to the, um. The property owner, but.
But reserve the right to. Say, hey, you have to do this.
But reserve the right to enforce it if. The parking affects, um, public safety, et cetera.
Mm hmm.
And who would be the enforcement officer?
I would think the building inspector.
You want your enforcement officer?
Yeah, I mean, again, if they were parking on sixty two and walking in, uh, you know, that, if you're, you know, which I think is, uh. Right, unlikely, but you know. I think if you, if you would like. Um. I could put a bullet point and send it to Tom on, on that issue. Lynn?
Um, I think that would be helpful. I think.
Okay.
The concerns. Was if we allow a variance. Of this magnitude from what is required. Um, would it set a precedent?
Hmm.
Yeah, I don't, Lynn, this is Tom. I, I don't think so because we've created a, an avenue. Where we have the reserve, the full build out. So. We're, we're not creating it at this time due to other constraints, wetlands constraints and, um. You know, topography and, you know, we don't want to, like I said, pave all of the whole site. So I think that there's a mechanism there that if another proponent comes before us and says, we want to build this with a reduction of parking spaces, you granted it over there. We can say, where is your reserve? And you demonstrate to us that you will have a full build out if. You know, market forces necessitate, necessitate this to happen. And so I think that there's an avenue for us.
And, and I think the other thing is that. And please object other board members, if you, uh, if you disagree with me. Uh, we are looking at the parking. Bylaw. And I think. Every member of the board at the meeting today finds the idea of this reserve requirement approach. To be an attractive one for the reasons that we've discussed earlier in the meeting. And so therefore, Lynn. I don't think it's out of the question to think that this might be. Enshrined in the parking bylaw in not too long.
Right. I think the other. Thing that we can point to is the times that we're in right now. We don't know what's going to happen. With office space. We don't know. And I think it's, I think we're actually being pragmatic. And I think Thomas earlier. Um, somebody said. That this was a progressive plan. And, and I think where it, we're showing, we're acknowledging. That. What's happening with. Office workers and office space is in flux right now. And we, instead of. Instead of, as people, several people have said. Paving over the town potentially unnecessarily. Um. I think it's a progressive approach to, um. What could become the reality of office space?
Yep. Lynn, does that address some of your concerns? And you're going to get a supportive email from us. And you, you've been here and heard what it's going to contain.
It does. My concern is. That even though this is seventy two thousand square feet. It may. Be that people will. Lease or rent a smaller portion of the building and there'll be more. Um. People in the building.
Mm hmm. No, I think, you know, I think that's, um. I think that's fair, but I think. What we've talked about. And I'm writing down the things that we should give you in a supporting letter. Um. That there is a mechanism to deal with that. And there's a mechanism to deal with that that isn't the first instance, simply commercial. And in the second instance, if. It bleeds on the public ways in any way, um. Would allow us to activate that reserve area.
Well, I, I think there's general support for that land being developed. Um. But I think our concerns are, as I've stated.
Mm hmm. I, I hope we've addressed some of those at least.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Okay, does, uh, Wayne or Kathy have anything more?
I think we're all set, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Kathy.
All set. Thank you. Appreciate the time. And, uh. We have worked really hard to try to. You know. Accommodate. Your concerns as well as addressing what we feel is appropriate for the marketplace that we have a viable property here. And I think, you know, we all want to win, not, not one on each side.
Yeah. And I, I'd just like to say to Lynn, if she hasn't signed off. Thank you for attending because I think it helps.
Too.
Yeah.
Agreed. Hey, folks, much appreciated. Uh, I look forward to getting you guys, uh, an updated plan. Um, uh, with, uh, what was discussed tonight. And, uh. Moving forward with the project. Really appreciate your input in getting us to this point. Very much appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
All right. Have a good night.
Night.
Okay. Moving on, the, um. We have a. Who's doing an update to the Clinton rail trail? Was that supposed to be Tim or?
I think.
People from Clinton, I thought.
Okay. Are they in the audience?
Nope.
No.
I wonder if Tim got the wrong date somehow.
Hmm. It was, we found out about this from an email from him, right?
That's true.
Yeah.
Yes. It was the woman that worked on. That's true, we did. Yes, it was the woman that worked on. Central Village study.
Oh, yeah.
She was, has something in Clinton going on. She wanted to give us an update.
I think she lives in Clinton.
Does live in Clinton.
Yeah, I think she would be attending not as a.
Representative in RPC, no, she's a a citizen of Clinton.
Yeah. Cause it's not like Tim to miss a meeting without telling. Us that he wouldn't be here.
Right.
Unless he's still waiting on the other Zoom call.
Well, I texted him asking if he was joining.
He did.
Yeah. Cause we also have to vote on seventy-two Carter Street tonight.
All right, to the best, just of that wonderful presentation.
Yes. Absolutely.
Carrie.
I wanted to, I hadn't had the opportunity to compliment you on that. And it's wonderful. We've acquired that land.
Yeah, it's gonna be, gonna be great. I'm very happy. I'm very happy it didn't draw the attention that the fence did.
God.
Absolutely. No, it's amazing. We spent like millions of dollars.
We spent eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars on a fire truck that didn't even have an inkling of debate and we.
I, it was kind of buried. It was, it was kind of buried. I have to say, they. That usually something like that would have its own line item. Cause I said after the meeting.
Yeah.
I said after, after the meeting, I was like, hey, we didn't buy a fire truck this year. And somebody said.
No, we did.
Yes, we did.
Uh, Eloise has her hand up.
As a member of the capital planning, uh, the reason we did it is we did have the money. And you have to order them twenty-four to thirty-two months ahead.
Wow, that crazy.
No, I think, I think that's.
And it's a pump and we need water.
Yeah.
No, no, I think that's fine. And it saved us a lot of time being on the fence, as they say.
We're gonna get a lot of mileage out of that one.
Thank you.
All right, do we want to take up that matter now for a vote? Cause that's it. All that's all I have on the agenda.
Yeah, let's do it.
Right, so Jay, um, do you have the plan?
Um, let me go back, cause we actually voted on it. I think we voted on it.
No.
Well.
We, did we even look at it?
Yeah.
We did, we did. Uh, no, we did look at it.
Right, because we were asked not to vote on it.
Correct.
I might be able to find it if you would like me to look.
Sure, please.
While you're looking at that, um, may I ask an administrative question? Uh, I'm the newbie elected planning board member. And it's been twenty years since I've been on the planning board before, but. As I remember it, you had the first year to sort of learn what the planning board was all about and I didn't. That one didn't assume any other administrative responsibilities like being the clerk or whatever, but. Please let me know what the rules are on that.
Jay's the clerk.
Sort of press ganged me in to be in the chair and they haven't let me off. And they did it to Ron for the last. Well, the twelve years that Ron was around. So we don't change hats very often, Thomas.
Oh, we used to.
Yeah, we used to.
Okay, so what I'm asking is. I would be very happy to serve as clerk next year. I would prefer not to do it this year. And I I just wondered whether I had sort of signed up for that without, sort of like the fire truck.
Right, exactly. It was buried in the line item. You didn't notice it.
Okay, no, that's fine. And and. I think I did say earlier in a, in in an earlier meeting that I'd be very happy to. Take the drafting or if we're looking at something like the parking bylaw or something like that. Um, and that would be more suitable to my schedule over the next year than being clerk.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, you would. Tim has been doing most of that so far.
Right. Um, Jay, did you find it? I had asked them to send it. Send a digital copy to the planning board on April nineteenth. It would have come.
We did not, we did not look at it in the, in the meeting that we were discussing this last.
Right, the email probably would have come from Ryan. I think it's Ryan Proctor.
Okay.
And or Greg Roy. I mean, I have it, but the plan should also have a copy.
Eighteenth of what month?
April. And really, we should look at the. Plan that was submitted to the planning board.
Ryan Proctor. Oh.
Look at that.
Oh, yeah, we we do have it.
Oh, good.
Okay, so let me just bring that up here. There it is.
All right.
I can show my screen.
Form, what is it, Form A?
We have a Form A.
Also be submitted with that.
Yep, it's here.
Excellent. And then did they send the Mylar to? In also?
I don't think so. The Mylar we were all signing was the.
Was Wayne.
Here one on Gateswood Road. Can you see this drawing?
Okay. So the, the existing frontage is a little shy, right?
Right.
Yep, couple of feet, like literally a couple of feet.
Okay, and then the. acreage is enough, right?
Yep, Jade, can you zoom in on lot one where it says lot one?
Yeah.
Eighty thousand, oh, eight two sixty-five. So yes, it is. And then there's an access easement. And it's a thirty foot wide easement until it gets into the property. So that should be enough to. Get into there with equipment if we needed to.
Yep. Yeah, I think originally he had it at twenty.
Okay.
And we had him make it as big as possible.
Right, so is the existing vegetation that's there next to the garage gonna remain? Or are we gonna create a trail through there or what's the?
We'll probably, we won't open up the the full thirty feet, but we'll probably open ten of it or something. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so there's pathway then. Most of that space is pretty wet, right? So is there enough distance from the wetlands to put a. Braille path or something in there?
Yep.
Yes. There's a setback requirement on the garage or not?
It's an easement, so there wouldn't be. It goes right to the lot line. Probably too close to the street, though.
Oh, certainly.
Have to watch when the plow trucks go by.
Yeah. Yeah, it's right on the street, too.
I know it is, yeah.
Yep.
So do we need to identify parcel, um, what's that down there? A, there's a parcel A, this separated parcel, the parcel the town's going to pick up.
This one.
Yeah, parcel A. Yeah, not a building lot. Okay, good.
Would you like me to make a motion?
Would you like to?
I would like to.
Excellent.
Um, Jay, just double check the, these plans are dated April thirteenth. The copy I had was dated April thirteenth, so.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, um, I would like to make a motion that we. Accept the plan from Dillison Roy dated April thirteenth for seventy-two Carter Street. Creating one house lot and one non-buildable lot.
You're to give the book and page.
Oh, book and page. Is it on there?
Yeah, it should be. It's probably out near where our signatures are, maybe.
Jay, the other corner, maybe?
Yeah. Yep.
There it is, yep.
Either zoom in or tell me what it says.
Well, there's a whole long list of them.
You just gotta give the top one.
Uh, book six, six, four, three, page two, four, four.
Oh, yeah, I see that. Um, yeah, what Jay said.
And that parcel A is not a building lot.
Correct.
And this is approval not under, not required under the subdivision control of town of Berlin. Okay, if I have a second.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion and a second that we accept a plan of land filed under the. Approval not required under subdivision control on town of Berlin created by. Gillis and Roy, yeah.
Yep.
Dated April third, April thirteenth?
Yep.
Twenty twenty-three. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask you to vote. JT.
Aye.
Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries unanimous. We will need the Mylar to sign, wherever that is, and then we need two copies of this plan to sign.
I'll tell him that. I will, I'll tell. Ryan.
Awesome.
Great.
I think, I think he dropped them off. They're, they're.
It could be there's a, there's a pile of stuff on top of the.
Yeah. I'm, I'm fairly certain that he did.
Yeah, okay.
I think it's a great acquisition. Can I ask, because I've lost the thread of it? I thought we had voted to commit complaining board controlled tons. To acquiring the house. What, what's happened with that?
Want me to take that?
Yes, please.
Please, yes.
Um, so when Tim and I were originally looking at this property, we. Were hopeful that we could make the house, acquire the house as well. And deed, and deed restricted as an affordable unit.
Yeah, that's just what I'm asking about, yes.
Yeah, as we can, as we did more research and kind of got into the logistics of that. It became apparent that the town really isn't, we don't have any mechanism for anybody to oversee the construction. The renovation of the house. Um, you know, the housing trust is brandy brand new. And.
Okay.
It, yeah.
I think you've explained it, yeah.
Yep, yeah. So we chose to forego that option in order to just acquire the land.
Yeah, no, I just lost that turn on the road and was obviously interested in it because I thought it was an opportunity, but I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah, no, it was unfortunate, but. Next time.
Yep.
Or another time.
So Carolyn, you're gonna find Leanne Lovell and Richard Weedman? And talk them into giving us an easement so we can run the trail through there, the other side, get all the way.
Certainly going to send them a letter and ask them if they would be interested in having some conversation.
Right.
Yes. Yep. One thing at a time, Jay. Jeez.
He's got an agenda.
Yeah, yeah.
We're gonna buy a dirt bike.
I do, too.
Everything. Everything everywhere all at once, you know?
Right. Yep. Oh, Maddie, my, the conservation agent has been on our honeymoon for the past two weeks and I'm. Just about at my wit's end. She comes home tomorrow. Thank goodness. Is just, it's amazing how much and where conservation's pretty slow right now and there's just so much all the time.
Yeah, no, I can only imagine.
Yeah.
All right.
All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Excellent. Second, excellent. Motion made in second. There's no discussion allowed and I'll ask you to vote. JT.
Aye.
Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
Tom Sanford, aye.